Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for October 8, 2008. This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda.
Motion.
A motion by Michael Marshon to amend the agenda.
Second.
Second by Paige Becknell. All right. This time, I'd like to amend the agenda to include the swearing-in of our new Planning Commission member at this time. O'Neill, would you please do the honor?
You swear or affirm to comply with the rules and regulations of the Parisian Commission. It's the bill that we're going to submit.
Thank you, O'Neill. All right. Let the record show that Mr. Julio Dumas is absent tonight. Okay. I'd like to have a motion to accept the minutes of August 13, 2008.
Motion.
Motion by Michael Marshon. Second.
Second.
Second by Paige Becknell. Any opposition? Any abstentions? A buddy abstains on the minutes since he's just been sworn in. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor for public comment period. Anyone wishing to come forward and address the commission on any item not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name, and you'll have three minutes. Anyone wishing to come forward? Seeing none, public comment period is closed. I just had a one. I'd like at this time to introduce the new Planning Commission member, Mr. Buddy Wells. It's a pleasure to have you here. Happy to help you in any way we can if you ever have any questions or need any assistance. We have a very good staff and a very good commission, so welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you. All right. Item 5, public hearing for granting approval to the following family partition. The Leland V LeMoyne property tracks B1A1A and B1A1B.
James Falgue, representing Girls &amp; Associates on the following family partition, asking the commission for approval.
All right. Commissioners, have any comments or questions at this time?
I have one. You have lot B1A1. You know which one? I'm talking about the big one.
5.82 acres.
Yes. You have 1, 2, 3 drainage servitudes.
Those were all existing.
Okay.
Prior to the survey.
Because I was just thinking, they don't need all three of those if they want some of their property back.
Yeah. They're all existing.
All right.
You take them off.
It's up to them. I mean, they may...
You'd have to get it.
Yeah, right. But I'm just saying, you know, in the future, that's a lot of property they could have.
Well, I think a lot of them were created for the lots from the Ardigal. I don't think they have drainage servitude on the back of their lots.
Drainage on the other side. Okay. Go ahead. Sorry. Do we have a letter from the owner of lot B2 giving access?
Yeah, well, they're signing the map, too.
Do we normally get a letter for that ahead of time? No? Okay.
They're agreeing to it.
Any other question?
Okay.
Okay. No other questions. I'd like to open up the floor for public comment, public hearing.
Oh, that's okay. Just good. Thank you.
Anyone wishing to come forward and comment, please come forward, state your name, and you'll have three minutes. No one wishing to comment. Public hearing is closed. Any other questions, comments? Did you want to see the letter?
I just have a question. Are you the owner of lot?
Do you own the big one?
Yes. Okay. That's all I need.
Any other questions, comments? What is the wish of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Michael Marshon for approval, seconded by Paige. Paige Becknell. Any opposition? Next item on the agenda, 5B, Gerald Ramirez property tracks A1A2.
Representing Mr. Ramirez on the following family partition, asking the commission for approval.
I have one question on the dedication letter. I don't know if this makes a difference, Charles. It says on the second sentence, "There is not enough road frontage along Butch Sefoy Road to complete this division as a simple division, therefore, we are dividing it up as a simple division." Should one of those say "family partition"?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I don't know if it matters. Does it need to be restated? Okay.
Any other comments, questions, this time? If not, I'd like to open up the floor for public comment, public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and talk on this property, please come forward. You'll have three minutes. No one wishing to come forward. Public comment period is closed. Any other comments or questions? What is the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve Barrow, seconded by Sherri Sloman. Any opposition? Motion carries. Item 6A, public hearing to consider the following servitude revocation. Durbin A subdivision, Lot 4A. Anyone here representing Durbin A subdivision? No one here at all? Do I have a motion to delay?
Well, I mean, once again, we have a revocation of a servitude, but there is going to be a new, according to the East Ascension Drainage District comment, a new permanent 15-foot servitude is dedicated along the east side of new lot 4A. So, once again, we're getting rid of one servitude, but we're picking up another one. I see no reason to defer it. It's pretty clear-cut. So, I'll make a motion to approve based on East Ascension Drainage District comment.
Okay. Well, I think we need to have a public hearing just to fill the regulation.
Public hearing.
Anyone wishing to come forward and comment on this servitude revocation, please come No one wishing to come forward? Public comment period is closed.
I'll offer my motion again.
Motion by Michael Marshon to approve, seconded by Beverly Bari. Any opposition?
According to the East Ascension Drainage District comment. I caught it.
All right. Item 6B, servitude revocation for the Samuel Flint property, track 7A1A1 and 7A1B1.
Ellen Jackson with McLennan &amp; Associates, representing the servitude revocation, asking for your approval.
Commissioners, have any questions or comments?
Yeah. Has something changed, Ellen? We have another map? Where did I get it?
I guess to clarify and to highlight the utility servitude that's being revoked.
Any comments or questions?
I'm going to make a general comment. Ellen, I noticed this in several of the McLenn drawings this month. They did not include names and addresses of adjoining property owners, and that is a requirement. And y'all normally do that. I don't know why it was not done this month.
I don't know either.
Would you make a note, make sure that gets...
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
Any other comments at this time? If not, I'd like to open up the floor for public comment period. Anyone wishing to come forward? Please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. Hearing none, public comment period is closed. Any other comments or questions by the commissioners?
Chair?
Yes.
They got one on each side that says...
Both of them.
What is the wish of the commission?
Make the motion to approve.
Based on the comment, the Public Works comment, that the gravel road will not be dedicated as a public roadway?
Yeah. Thank you.
A second.
Okay. Motion by Michael Marshon for approval based on the gravel road will not become a public road, and seconded by Paige Becknell. Any opposition? Okay. Public meeting grant approval for the following simple divisions of property with a variance. H Arthur Morgan Estate, Lot E3D1A through E3D1D. Ms. Jackson?
Yes. Ellen Jackson again with McLennan &amp; Associates, proposing this simple division with a variance. There weren't any comments, asking for your approval.
No questions or comments. I'd like to open up the floor for public comment period. Anyone wishing to come forward, please come forward. You'll have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to come forward. Public comment period is closed. Comments, questions by commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Paige Becknell for approval, seconded by Beverly Bari. Any opposition? Public meeting for granting approval for simple division of property, the Roy Paul Miller property, lots A2B1, A2B2. Yes, ma'am.
Ellen Jackson again. There weren't any comments on this simple division of property either, asking for your
Commissioners, have any comments or questions?
Ellen, what kind of pipeline is that running through the property?
It was shown on the... I don't have the name, but I can't get the name.
Is it just a gas? Is it just a gas?
I don't have the name, though.
Any other questions or comments? This time, I'd like to open up the floor for public comment period. Anyone wishing to come forward? You have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to come forward. Public comment period is closed. Any comments, questions for commissioners? Stacy, you've got... Mr. Dumas has joined us. No questions or comments? What is the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Michael Marshon for approval, seconded by Ms. Sloman. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Don't have to mark your absence at the same time. Save me some time. I got an early start. I'm going to miss my agenda. Okay. Item 7C, public meeting for following simple division of property for the Joseph E. Babin property, lots JB2 and JB... through JB4.
My name is Ronald Bennett, R. Bennett Engineers, representing Mr. Ronnie Marshon, asking for the approval of a simple division with the variance of the 40-foot servitude of access to the 35 that exists.
Any questions, comments by commissioners? Hearing none at this time. I'd like to open up the floor for public comment. Anyone wishing to come forward? Please come forward, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Seeing none, public comment period is closed. Any comments, questions, or commissioners?
I just have one question. What is this property zoned?
Zone RM.
Any additional comments, questions? What is the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve, but that no further division be
I have a motion by Sherri Sloman for approval with the condition that no further development for the subdivision be approved, seconded by Julio Dumas. Any opposition? Item 7D, New Hermitage Plantation, lots 1B1 through 1B4, simple division of property.
Name is Russell Mystic, C. Mystic Surveys, representing Carol E. D. Smiley, and we're asking the commission for their approval.
Comments, questions by commissioners?
I went out there, and you have a house. It was a house, and there was two trailers and another small home. Where are they placed on this map?
Whose property are they on?
Sir?
Whose property are they on?
I don't know. I couldn't tell. There was no surveying stakes or anything that could show me where the property was.
They're not on the property we subdivided.
Where are they?
You're talking about...
Ma'am, state your name, please. Can you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm Carol E. Smiley.
Okay. Thank you.
I went down Kramer...
Kramer Lane.
Lane.
Yes, ma'am.
And they were to the right of that.
Yes, ma'am. There's a trailer to the right, and then right at the end of Kramer...
Our servitude's coming off before Kramer makes a turn to the left.
Yes, the servitude is coming off to the east. And then it goes to my property. But there's two... If you went, there's two trailers and a little house.
And a small...
But that's not the same property.
Okay.
Yeah, this road should be about 200 foot before then where it comes off.
Yes.
But I couldn't find any stakes or anything out there.
Well, we haven't staked it out yet.
Okay. Well, usually your surveyor does something.
Well, we surveyed this several years ago. I mean, we surveyed the whole entire track. So, right now, we... Based on our previous surveys, we're going to be out there and stake all this out once this gets approved.
And that's fine. That's just how we find the properties.
Yeah, I understand.
There's just no way to locate it without something out there.
Well, this didn't require us going out there at the time because we did extensive surveying several years ago on this. We surveyed the whole entire track. It was a family partition several years ago. All this track, 1A, 1B, 1C, I mean, it was 500, 600 acres we surveyed. Yeah, we're coming off about 200 feet. So, this servitude's going to be coming off Kramer about 200 feet from where Kramer takes the left at.
Oh, okay. I saw that, but I couldn't determine what was what, you know? There was no stakes or anything out there.
By the way, when y'all was looking, I put yourself...
I was out there Monday afternoon, and I looked around at somebody, but there was nobody...
So, let me ask you. So, you did a family partition several years ago, and now you're doing a simple subdivision. And now, we have a total of how many lots?
Four.
No. Total, including the family partition.
Well, you're going to have four lots.
Including the family partition, nine.
No, this is not a family partition.
I didn't say it was a family partition. But you've taken a parent track of land. You divided it once into five, and now you're dividing the fifth into four for a total of nine lots.
No, no. This was several years ago. This was like 600 acres.
I don't care how long ago it was. But totally, you've taken the track, and you've now divided it into a total of nine lots.
Talking 600 acres here.
I understand that.
This was a state. When we divided, it was a state. All the family members got certain parts.
Right.
But it was a family partition back then.
Any other comments, questions at this time? Anyone wishing to come forward and comment on this? Please come forward. You'll have three minutes. Seeing none, public comment period is closed.
Staff? I mean, I count either nine lots, is that right? Or is it more?
If you go with 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, and 1E, that was a five family partition. And then, there's a 1C2, and a 1C3, and a 1C4. So, that adds three. And then, a 1B2, a 1B3, and a 1B4.
So, it's 11 lots. And the limit for a subdivision like this is amended?
Sorry, I didn't hear the question.
What's the limit in the code for number lots?
There's no actual limit.
For a simple division, there's not?
There's not?
No, because all these lots, they're over an acre in size. So, there's no sewer stipulation that they have to put in community sewer, for one thing.
And he's got a 60-foot access.
Okay. I just saw a subdivision, that's all. My mind is subdivision.
Any other comments, questions by commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Paige Becknell, seconded by Michael Marshon. Any opposition? Motion carries. Item 7E, Quaid Properties, Lot B2A1A and B2B1, simple division. Ms. Jackson?
There were two comments on this particular subdivision. They've been addressed, asking for your approval.
Ellen, can you tell us what's going on? Because this didn't make much sense to us when we looked at it and we drove out. We drove down through the sagefield. Do you know what they're going to do?
Well, sometime in the future, the back part may be developed, but you see where B2B, it had an access over... If you look at this little dot right here, this was the road access. But now, you know, all this is being incorporated by Sagefield. So, since this road is built to standard, they just want to dedicate and have the access that way, where that bridge is.
Does the same person own...
They do now.
Okay.
So, that's why they're doing it.
Okay.
Ellen, back in the corner there, when you go on down that road, you take a left. Is that some sort of sewer pond? Or what is that there? That's a real unsightly looking...
Well, yeah, it is. It's designed to be a pond. I don't think they're finished with Sagefield condos yet, so...
That's the treatment plant back there?
What is that?
It's probably just a detention. You talking about the pond over there at the end at the left?
All the way at the south side of the property, right in the middle.
I would say that's a detention pond.
It is so nasty.
It's horrible looking.
Okay.
And it's also very close to the houses.
Yeah.
I would not have... I don't know how that was approved because it's within so many feet of a residence. So, I was not sure that was the treatment plant.
I don't know if it's the treatment plant or if it's just supposed to be a detention pond. I'm trying to see if they have a layout of Sagefield in here so we can see what that is. But I really don't know.
Something needs to be done there. It's gross looking.
Put that on the record here. Any other comments, questions by commissioners? This time, I'd like to open up the floor for public comment period. Anyone wishing to come forward? You'll have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to come forward. Public comment period is closed. Any additional comments, questions? What is the wish of the commission?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Michael Marshon, seconded by Beverly Bari.
Paige.
Paige, I'm sorry. Paige Becknell, excuse me. Any opposition? Item 7E, simple division of property, the Quaid property, tracks B2A1A and B2B1. Is that the one we just did? I'm sorry. It's the... Item 7F, Luella Pertuit Estate, tracks... Item 7F, Luella-Pertuit Estate, tracks C1 and C2.
Ellen and...
Now, Ms. Jackson.
Okay. Ellen Jackson again with McLean and Associates proposing just one additional lot on this subdivision. There weren't any comments, asking for your approval.
Any comments, questions by commissioners?
You have a letter from the owner of track B2A for the access.
B2A? No, they're not going to use that, that's why I just did a 20-foot servitude on that side.
So, they're not, it's right beside it, but they're not going to use it?
To know the comments at this time, I'd like to open up the floor for public comment period. Anyone wishing to come forward and comment? Please come forward, state your name, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Seth Orsono, owner of track 2BA. Ask the commission to deny this division based on the fact of potential litigation initiated by the petitioner of this plaque and the owner of track B1.
May you have any concerns, or why do you...
Yes, they're contesting the 12-foot utility servitude granted in 2007 on the adjacent track, B1. I have a map, if you'd like to see that plaque that was approved at that time. This utility servitude is being contested as void because the, both owners, Kent Orsono and Shannon Orsono, did not sign the approved plaque granting that servitude. So, they've initiated litigation to potentially have that blocked. So, I have no utility servitude to my property as well as the owner of track 2B2. My wish is to gain utility servitude to my property. In the research that I've done, I think if we swapped the two servitudes on the new plot, C1, new lot, I could use that utility servitude to service my property. Don't know the extent or the intent of the litigation, we haven't been able to get an answer on that. So, I just ask that at this time it be denied, give us a chance to work out the details of the utility servitudes. Secondly, my 20-foot right-of-servitude is being encroached upon with debris that has been pushed into that servitude and existing fences that are encroaching into the servitude, so I do not have full access up to 20 feet right-of-way in addition to the 12-foot utility servitude. I have a letter from their lawyer, if you'd like to see that, to back up the litigation claim.
Now, you're Seth?
Yes, sir.
Orsono?
Seth Orsono, owner of track B2A.
Okay, and so Kent Orsono owns C1 and B1?
He owns B1, Barbara LeBlanc on C1, C2. Kent is requesting the family partition, I believe, from what I know, C2 will be donated to him.
O'Neill, how does this affect us?
It's up to you. If it doesn't affect us, I mean, if it complies with our rules, you can grant it or you can deny it, it's up to you.
We can approve it, and then it's up to them to work out the...
If it's in compliance with our rules, it's in compliance with our rules, it's not. You can grant any servitude on anybody else's property, obviously, but if it's been tracked as if you can move, you can handle it either way.
How long do you think it'll be before you all get this settled?
I don't know, we haven't had success as of late getting an answer on the intentions. I would like to, if it's as simple as swapping their 20-foot servitude and the 12-foot utility servitude, that's a simple fix that doesn't need to go to court. Five minutes on the draftsman's computer. And also, I think would provide a nice neutral ground between the two 20-foot right-of-passages. Currently, they would butt together, you know, creating...
But there may be issues of driveway access on Highway 429, that may be a state road where they may not allow a certain amount of driveway, so it may be more than just drafting.
Right, right, yeah.
So, are you saying that you're landlocked, that you can't get utility access?
Currently, the 12-foot utility servitude is still legal. It was approved by this commission, it's been filed in court. I don't know the outcome, I don't know how far litigation will go, if it were to be later denied because both signatures were not required, acquired at the time it was approved. I was hoping for a simple resolution to get utilities to my property because then my property would be rendered useless because I could not get utilities to it.
So, you don't have utilities on your property now?
It's undeveloped, but I want to be able to improve it. And secondly, I'm having, I've had to get an attorney that will have to initiate eviction proceedings to get the debris cleared off the right-of-way, get the fences off the right-of-way so I can even access my property.
So, how do the owners in track C1 and track C? How are they involved in this litigation, again?
The owner of tracks C1 and C2 is not involved in litigation. The partitioning has been being done for the benefit of the owner of B1, so he can be donated track C2. Track C2 is going to be donated to the owner of B1, Kent Orsono, who has initiated the litigation. I'm looking for a simple resolution to gain utility servitude to my property without a legal fight.
Did you buy your property, or were you part of a family partition, or...
It was donated to me by my father through a family partition.
And that was in...
July of 2007.
This year? Excuse me.
Yes, it's been a little over...
Last year.
Yes, ma'am, July 2007. And secondly, the owner of track B2B would be impacted as much as I would be.
Charles, is this, do you remember when this family partition was done? Is this one that came before the commission? I mean, how did we landlock somebody? Or was this, do you remember?
Well, it really didn't landlock it, it went before the commission, you all approved the family partition where the two lots were created to the rear on that 20-foot servitude of passage, that existing 20-foot servitude of passage, because the owner of that front lot did not want to dedicate any additional servitude. He did dedicate the utility servitude at the time. And that was it.
And why don't... Maybe I'm not understanding the problem, but if these utility servitudes don't line up, is that the problem, or...
Well, I don't know if it's a problem, it's just that they don't... The owner of lot B1 is saying that it's an invalid dedication because his wife didn't sign the dedication note.
I want the court to decide that, I'm not...
Okay.
I got no litigation on that, I want the court to decide that.
Any other questions? Him, if it's time.
Have we done the public hearing?
That's what he is, that's why he's here. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to comment at this time? No other comments, public hearing is closed. Ms. Jackson?
I don't know what this litigation has to do with the fact that we're trying to subdivide this property, so if you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer.
Well, I guess the question would be, is that servitude really accurate? And that's the one on Kent Orsono's property that you've drawn.
Again, that's not the property we're hearing.
I understand, but she drew it, so it's... Or somebody drew it here.
You talking about the utility servitude that we're proposing?
No. No, the one on the track B1.
Well, according to the map that was approved, it's existing, I mean, it's of record at the courthouse. I just showed it.
I'm not arguing, I just...
Yeah.
There may be a technicality that...
Yeah, it's drawn and...
The courts may have to decide.
According, because it's a, you know, a map of record.
I understand.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Orsono's having a problem, but that isn't the property we're looking at tonight. And I don't think we can hold this property hostage while he works out his issues with the other Mr. Orsono. I'll make a motion to approve.
With the stipulation that no further subdivision?
They can't with the 20-foot servitude.
Okay. I'll second it, I'm sorry.
What about staff's recommendation here that we have a stipulation? Yeah. Okay, so we're adding that?
Right.
Okay. Motion by Sherri Slimon for approval with a stipulation, no further subdivision, seconded by Julio Dumas. Any opposition? Motion carries. Public hearing to consider the following private road requested to be accepted into the parish maintenance system, Thomas E. Road Extension. Anyone here to present this? Staff, want to present it?
This is a private road that is at the end of the public portion of Thomas E. Road. And this portion which is requested is, it's a gravel section existing. The width of the gravel section is 13 to 18 feet. The existing servitude of passage is 40 feet. And from what we can tell, that which has been given to us, it was created prior to 1998. But the date is uncertain, we don't know the exact date. There are eight houses that are located on this private road, and they're asking that it be taken into the maintenance system.
Would the parish usually accept these types of things?
It's up to the parish council.
I mean, no, it's substandard, so if it were to be brought into the system, they'd have to spend some money to bring it up to at least the correct width.
I think the road ought to be brought up to parish standards before we even consider submitting it to the council for approval.
I concur, I mean, you know, that puts a burden on the rest of the taxpayers of a central parish to improve the roads that someone in the past failed to develop properly. You know, that's my biggest concern with all of these simple subdivisions with, you know, ultimately, they show up and say, oh, turn it over to the parish, let them improve it and maintain it.
But at the same time, we already have an established criteria with which we... It's in use right now as far as acceptance of road to the parish maintenance system, and this road meets that criteria.
You know, that's up to the council to make a decision, and we just make a recommendation.
But we use the criteria, and that's what we have to go by. So, that's what we should be basing our recommendation on, does it meet the criteria that's been established?
Is the criteria codified, or is it in the ordinance, or is it just a policy?
It's adopted criteria that's adopted by the parish council.
And staff, you recommend approval of this request?
The staff is not making a recommendation on this, other than it does meet the criteria.
It may be a good idea to get that criteria out, especially with the new member on board, maybe we could get that to the...
Each of you have been sent a copy of this numerous times.
Right.
And the new member doesn't.
He's got a copy, okay. Thank you.
Isn't there something about it had to be created before '93?
Yes.
And this says '98. Thomas E. wrote, this says '98.
It does say '98, it was done prior to '98, but we couldn't determine the exact date.
All you're doing is making a recommendation, you're making a recommendation.
Correct.
I think if we continue to do this, we're just setting precedent and setting more... The parish is going to be responsible for more and more roads, and most of the roads are substandard. I mean, I agree with Julio, it's just putting more burden on the taxpayers.
Well, I think that based on the fact that we can't document that the road existed, you know, prior to 1993, it therefore doesn't meet the criteria, and I'm going to make a recommendation that we don't.
Let's have a public hearing.
Oh, that's right. Go to public hearing.
All right, this time I'd like to open up the floor for public comment, anyone wishing to come forward and comment, please come forward, you'll have three minutes to speak. Public hearing. All right, no one wishing to comment, public hearing is closed.
Okay.
But at the same time, the date in '93, it's automatically accepted into the parish maintenance system.
If it's older than '93.
If it's older than '93. But because they can't establish that date, that's why it's coming before us, they know it was before '98. So, that falls back to us using the criteria that's already established. Now, if we want to get better roads, then what we need to do is, we need to sit down and we need to change the criteria and send that to the parish council.
I wholeheartedly agree with you.
Okay, and it's the same, there has been some talk about that, all through this year, we've been discussing that. A few things have happened where it's kind of gotten sidetracked, but I'm going to offer a motion to accept it based on the fact that it does meet an established criteria.
Does staff have the criteria in their possession? I mean, just...
That's, Steve, that's the criteria. It's very difficult to understand. You have to read about 10 pages.
Oh, yeah, I remember this.
Julio, is your motion on the table still?
Well, no, I didn't make it before the public hearing, you have a motion on the table right now.
Yeah, Michael Marshawn.
I'll call for a second.
He has made a motion to recommend acceptance. Michael Marshawn here.
I'll call for a second.
I'll second based on...
Criteria.
All right.
And then now, it's too late to make a subsequent motion?
No, no. Call for vote.
Well, okay, a motion by Michael Marshawn to accept into the system, seconded by Buddy Wells. Any opposition?
I oppose.
Hold on, let's see. Let me get a vote. Well, oppose is Ms. Barre, Mr. Dumas, Ms. Slimon. All right. Okay, three, Chair, Paige, you're opposed. Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Michael. Michael, Buddy, and Mr. Barre. What say you?
With it.
Four to three. An opposition, so motion does not carry.
I'll make a motion to recommend that it not be accepted into the parish, because the road is substandard, and there's no evidence that it was done prior to 1993.
Okay, a motion to not recommend acceptance by Julio Dumas, seconded by Ms. Slimon. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's four, and all opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries four to three, to deny. And I'll fix my paperwork later. On my notes. Item number nine, committee reports, subdivision ordinance committee. Any report?
We did not meet after the hurricane. We will meet again this month, last Monday, 2:00 at DPW.
I'm sorry, what time?
2:00, the last Monday of the month, at DPW.
Thank you. Strategic planning, any report? No report. Old business, Ascension Marketplace, preliminary. Mr. Sledge.
Good evening. I'm going to be very brief. What we requested is that you reconsider a stipulation that was imposed on a commercial project November of last year. That stipulation was simply that no driveway ties could be made to LA 73, which ran in front of this project. Since that time, we have met with the highway department on numerous occasions, which is the ongoing permitting agency, I guess. We've had some traffic studies done, and Mr. Pickard, one of the developers, has had several contacts with potential buyers. And this is becoming a somewhat major stumbling block. In my letter, I wrote to request this rehearing, I pretty much laid out best I could our position, you know, what happened, why it happened, what we've done since then, and simply are asking you to un-stipulate this item, let the permitting process do its thing. And in support of that, just this week, and it was actually unsolicited, we do have on DOTD letterhead, when we requested the permit for the project, where they addressed this head-on. And what they said was, essentially, you may not have a driveway tie-in on the corner lots, we'll look at the other two on a case-by-case basis when you come in to see us for a driveway permit. And simply stated, out of four lots, the highway department has taken away two already, and so we simply would like to have the, I guess, the opportunity to let the state review it at the traffic level, to see if, say, right-in, right-out is actually a good use for those two lots. So what my letter really said was, lots one through four, since then, the state has actually ruled, without even knowing of y'all's stipulation, they won't let us have two anyway. So we're really here talking about the two-in lots. And I'm just going to pass this out, but it was the state's comments when we turned in the construction plan, we have done the construction plan for this project. And it's item number four highlighted in the elements. Plans are currently not approved, they are at the ERA, and we're still waiting on comments. But we're at that level of, we have to do detail for the parish and the state, and this is the comments based on what you have declared and agreed to do with the state. Mr. Pickard is going to tell you what he has found out, just to try to market this project.
Good evening. I know y'all got a pretty tough job trying to balance economic development for the parish, as well as making sure that you protect the parish from a standpoint of traffic and drainage and not creating a problem that can be avoided, you know, before it happens. We have been marketing this property based on the subdivision, the preliminary plat that was approved last year, and we have a situation where we have a major grocery store that has been interested in part of the property, and one of their stipulations was that they either needed a red light or more than one way in and out of the property. In addition to that, a major drugstore has approached us about two of the lots, in which case, they had no problem being able to make left-hand turns, enter the subdivision, and go to the lots three and four, but wanted the ability for people to get in and out of the parcel on lot four by virtue of a right-in, right-out turn lane, which would alleviate traffic, it'd keep people from having to wait to get in and cross back into their property, as well as the ability to get out into the flow of traffic without having to stack up at the main entrance. So we've run into a little problem with this, and I guess our only request is, is that, you know, the state is pretty particular about creating traffic problems themselves. Consequently, we want to at least have the ability for them to analyze it as professional traffic people and determine whether or not it's a problem to offer that right-in, right-out of the property on those two outer lots. So we're asking the commission to reconsider that stipulation, and we'll cross the bridge with the state and DOTD, and based on whatever their professional opinion is, you know, we obviously will have to deal with that with the purchasers of the individual piece of the property within the subdivision.
Any questions, comments by commissioners?
When this development came before us, Wayne Sledge, as the engineer, prepared a submittal, which included a plat, drainage impact analysis, traffic impact analysis, other documentation. And that documentation was reviewed by our ERA. And comments were made to the commission, things that we needed to look at, and if there were any concerns. And so the conditions that we placed on you were placed on you in good faith, based on the submittal. Marketing, we have nothing to do with how you market your development. That's, to me, that's irrelevant. And on more than one occasion, I have been told by individuals, well, the state's going to do what they want to do, they're going to trump you. Well, I don't think that that... That doesn't give us the right to be negligent in our findings and how we rule, just because the state has the power to go ahead and change something up. Right now, I see no... I don't see any justifiable reason for us to revoke the condition that we placed on you. There's nothing there that has anything to do with, that you've presented tonight, that leads me to believe that we should do that. I think the condition that was placed upon you was based on your submittal and the reviewing of our ERA. Now, if the state, after they review, which they've said they will review on a case-by-case basis, if the state decides that we went too far with it, and they don't require as much, then so be it. But I don't see where that requires us to revoke our condition.
Mr. Jerry, staff, what exactly are we doing tonight? Are we agreeing to hold a public hearing on this matter? There was an application made for it?
No, sir. No, sir. All you are, with the item before you, is requesting you to remove that one stipulation from your preliminary.
Okay, let me just go through the process while I get it through my dense skull, okay? An individual, an applicant comes in, files an application, gets a request, shows up before the planning commission, and a preliminary plat, and that application is disposed of and closed. Someone wants to come in and they want to change it, how does that process work? Do they file an application, do they not file an application, do they appeal it, is there a period to appeal, how does that work?
There is no application in the subdivision process. Only application there is, is if you deny approval to a subdivision, then they fill out an application or a form requesting you to reconsider that subdivision.
Okay, but a final plat was submitted and approved.
A preliminary plat.
A preliminary plat was submitted. So what you're saying is, is we haven't gone to the next step?
That's the only step you've gone through, is granted preliminary approval. Excuse me, a preliminary approval with stipulations. They're asking you to remove one stipulation.
May I say something, please? First of all, I need to correct something. First of all, we're not asking you to approve a right-in, right-out, or anything else, we're just asking you to allow the state, in their wisdom and expertise, to determine whether or not a right-in, right-out on those two outer lots is something that is a traffic improvement to the subdivision, something that would be allowable, that would improve the access to it, or not.
Let me kind of try to paint you a little division here. Notwithstanding the fact that DOTD controls access to that road, because it's a state highway, okay? We control the planning of land, okay? And so, based on the preliminary plat that you submitted, and based on the information you gave us at the time, we looked at it, and we collectively agreed that it was in the best interest to internalize the traffic and to ensure that we protected the quality of life in Highway 73 and minimized the impact on Highway 73, which, you know, from a planning perspective, needs a lot of help, to say the least.
Well, there are improvements scheduled for that area, number one. And nobody knows the impact any better than I do, I've got two other developments there.
I understand that. And, you know, having said that, having said that, if you came to me with a site plan, and if you came to the commission, I should say, with a site plan that showed how you intend to handle that circulation, that internal circulation, and link it all together, I would say that you're probably in a position where you could justifiably ask for something like that, but just to simply say, hey, you know, I'm having a hard time marketing this piece of property, I'd like for you to take this stipulation off so it can help me market it, and just leave it up to DOTD, because I take exactly what's going to happen. You know, we've got a preliminary plat that shows a lot that only has access on to two lots.
You have seven. You have seven lots with only one access.
You have two that only show access to 73 on the plat, and what the message, lot one and lot four only have access to Highway 73 in the preliminary plat.
No.
Where's the other access?
Lots two, there's the road...
Lots one and four front on 73 only.
No.
Well, where else are there four?
One, two, three, and four, all front 73.
Yeah, but two and three front on Marketplace Avenue as well. I'm saying you have two lots that only front on 73. So the message to DOTD is, the parish doesn't care whether you put a driveway on 73 or not. So I'm not willing to relinquish my ability to look at that and see whether or not I concur or not. And that's Julio's position, okay? I'd rather see what the circulation plan's going to look like for the whole development. There may be a warrant for a right turn in, a right turn out, maybe two, I don't know. But until I see what that circulation pattern looks like, I can't tell you that, and I'm not going to make that decision.
Okay. Well, I mean, while marketing the property is, you know, a concern of mine, you know, and I understand that it's not y'all's...
Not my primary responsibility, but I do care.
Yeah, I mean, all of you have to care about the, you know, economic development of the parish and that kind of thing. And logic would tell you that if you're going down the road and you've got to turn off into a driveway, or you're going to come on to the driveway, onto the main road with the flow of traffic, you're not crossing traffic, you're not stopping people from, you know, exiting the main road. I mean, it can't be a big problem since that traffic was going there anyway. It's coming this way, turning in, then it's coming back out, you know? It's not a deterrent to the traffic problem that's already existing on Highway 73. It's a way to get in and out of it, instead of having everybody going in, one entrance, in and out, one entrance.
Yeah, but I don't think you're hearing me. I think that you've got to show me the whole circulation, the whole internal circulation, how you're going to lay these things out, where are people going to park. It may very well be that it's not a right turn in, right turn out, it may be just a right turn in. But, you know, based on what I see here, I don't have enough to make a decision, other than to say, there is no reason to change it. The conditions that existed at the time, we did this on November, continue to exist, and nothing has changed, other than, and again, don't take this the wrong way, your inability to market it.
Well, there again, that's not my total concern. My total concern is that, I mean, the ERA, this was not a recommendation by the ERA that there was no right-in, right-out, number one. That was something that came up as a result of the ultimate approval of the preliminary plat.
Correct.
And the only thing that I'm trying to do is make sure, make sure that this is not a staunch no by the parish, you know?
I'm not quite sure I can make it any clearer, I'm saying, show me all your internal circulation. You know, bring to us what all those is going to look like, and we'll consider it, but at the present time, what I'm looking here on paper, okay, and that's what I got to go on, the circumstances haven't changed. So I personally can't support, I don't know what the rest of commissioners, I mean, you've heard what Commissioner Marshon said, but I'm just giving it to you from a planning perspective, that if you're going to support, or you want us to support a right turn in, right turn in, right turn out, you know, I think you need to show us what the footprints and what the circulation of this property is going to look like, in order for us to make it, you know, be able to make a judgment. Right now, nothing's changed since November, I'm looking at the same preliminary plat we had in November, same conditions, same circumstances.
There again, I didn't understand it at the time, I just...
Right.
I just couldn't conceive why no right-in, right-out. I could understand, you know, one main entrance, but cross-traffic access, you know?
Normally, I would accept the recommendation of DOTD, but it's been my experience, right-ins, right-outs don't work. I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Got a motion to deny by Sherri Slimon, seconded by Michael Marshon. All in favor?
Point of clarification, sir, from staff. This is still a preliminary plat, and I think if they... This is still a preliminary plat, and I think if, if they came back with additional information or something, you could bring them back again, couldn't you?
Trying.
Okay, I, I just don't want it to be, you know, one of those, can't come back whenever. Okay.
Any opposed? All right, motion to deny passes. All right. Thank you, sir. Item number 11, adjourn.
Motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask the staff to, to give us the terms of all of the commissioners, please? I know there have been some--
This can be clarified.
Yeah, I don't think he has--
I will.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
He's already committed. He will do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, we are adjourned.